Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the December 15th Selectmen's Meeting. I'm going to call meeting at work. Can I get a real call, please?
Veronica Cal present.
Wayne Miller present. Please join me in the pledge. Rip my thing out of my ear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Next meeting is being recorded, audio and video, and being broadcast on Channel 9. Chairman's additions, deletions, I do not have any. We've got a lot to get through tonight.
Wayne, can I add a couple things to the end of the meeting?
Like what?
Dates for future meetings to discuss. I don't think that's on here. And the process for the TA evaluation, which we don't have to talk about in detail or anything like that, just to set a date.
Sure, that's fine. Just remind me.
Okay, thank you.
One for public comment period. Anything? Anybody have anything? Doesn't sound as if we do. Okay. So 2.1 joint meeting with the planning board. There's a planning board on here.
Mr. Miller, this is Chaz, clerk of the planning board. I don't see any other board member here, so I don't think we need to open it to a joint meeting.
Okay, this is just an appointment anyways, isn't it?
That is correct.
Okay.
This is Carol Hofstas is supposed to be appointed.
Right.
Well, let's see if we do.
So if the if the board may, the planning board has voted to recommend Carol Hofstas as appointed as a full voting member of the planning board.
Okay, can I get a motion, Veronica?
I move that we appoint Carol Hofstas as a full voting member of the planning board. Effective, do we have dates on that?
It would be as of today until the next election, yes.
I thought it would be through April 2023, because I think it's my term that she's filling.
Correct. She's filling that term as from an from an alternate to that position.
Okay, so the the appointment would be from today through the town election in April 2023.
Correct.
And I'll second that. Any comments, discussion? I have none.
I have none.
Okay, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Jess. All right, 2.2 Police Chief Jay Sartell for a grant. I know we're a couple minutes early, but is Jay on?
I am.
Jay, welcome. So I'll let you take it away.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me on such a packed agenda. Getting so close to holidays, everybody's trying to to get in under the wire. We have I have the pleasure to let you know that we have received a grant from the Office of Public Safety and Security relative to our use of or our request to equip the men and women with body cameras. The total of the grant is $34,033. I wanted to make sure that we talked about it in in terms of its its strings or its ongoing cost of the program moving forward. Generally speaking, in order to afford the data storage and management and maintenance of these these electronic devices, that the costs ongoing will fall between somewhere between, I would think, 12 and maybe $17,000 a year, depending on where we settle once I kind of push through all the bids and and the procurement process. The one curveball that EOPS threw me relative to the grant was they backed out a replacement plan that was worked into my original figures. So I will have to rework the numbers to determine what our outline expenses on an annual basis will be. But it would probably run between, and I talked to the rep today to kind of confirm, big window, I understand, but probably somewhere between 12 and $15,000 as high, maybe as 17, worst case scenario. There's quite a bit involved in the process. It would take a long time to get up and off the ground and into the field. That said, I have done this before. I've got some policies to lean on. I'd be happy to to share my thoughts on a body on the benefits and and such of body worn cameras. I did include it in my memo informing you of the the grant, but I'm more than happy to attend to take questions or go over that. But suffice to say, the way that I would structure this is whatever budget I was working on, I'd try and structure it so we can plan it in advance. It's not a an unplanned expense. Depending on when the grant is awarded, when we receive funding, I would then have a certain amount of time to to roll the the program out. And then the following year, we would be on the hook for the costs of maintaining and data storage and management and that type of thing. So I don't know whether or not that would be a fiscal '22 expense or whether or not I'd be able to drag it out enough to make it a fiscal '23 expense. I'm not really sure. I'd have to kind of put it together and put it on timeline.
Jay, I've talked to you about it already, so I really don't have any questions.
I have a question, I guess. So the 34K just covers the equipment itself. Is that correct?
No, there's quite a bit in the budget for that 34,000. I could go over it briefly, but there's some hardware, there's some software, there's some training. There's some additional computers. Yeah, I could I could run you through it if you wanted to. It wouldn't take very long. It's probably.
I guess just from what you were saying about the replacement plan and the funding of it, that would or would not be out of capital. I'm assuming it would not because it's less than 50K. Is that correct?
That's correct. I wouldn't use it as a capital expense. I would probably nest it somewhere in my maintenance of equipment line, something like that. You're placed on an ongoing basis. It's difficult to, you know, do it from capital plan to capital plan. And they do have a life longer than two or three years, reasonable cuts in other areas to try and make it bounce. But suffice to say, this will be in addition to my budget for whatever fiscal year it becomes due. But just real quickly, Ms. Cal, the cameras themselves, docking stations, licenses, data storage, another piece of software, another piece of software into desktop computers to facilitate the program is that is where what would be paid for year one.
And those desktops are definitely.
Getting this grant from the from the government, as I would be able to multipurpose these, but they but their primary purpose would be to facilitate this this program.
I think this is a great thing, chief. Anytime we get a grant is always a good thing. Do we need a motion on this, Jim, to accept or?
There'd be a motion to accept, and I think what the way Jay has written it up would be, as you see on your agenda, in 2.21 authorized to town administrator to sign the standard form contract.
So that's what this is for.
Do you want me to make the motion or do you want me to ask the questions first about the signatures in this packet that we got in our packets?
Just do the motion first, I guess, then we can discuss. How's that?
So let me look at the motion. I guess I move to accept the fiscal year 2020 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant and to authorize the town administrator to sign the Massachusetts Standard Contract Form and Grant Application.
And I'll second that.
Should I do that on two? All right, so we're good. All right, so my question is, in what we were we provided? Yes, we were. So the second page is the standard contract form. So that's what you're signing, correct, Jim?
Correct. And anytime we receive state grants, there's always that one page form, same boilerplate language. You have to really search to find the type of grant and the dollar figure, but it's the standard form.
Okay, and further back, there are other pages that seem to require signature, signature of authorized signatory. I assume that's the chief that is signing those pages. Is that correct?
Well, what you're authorizing by that motion you just read is authorizing the town administrator to sign not only the standard form contract, but also the grant application. So you'll know in the back of the pages, there are a number of places where the chief has written in or filled in town administrator and or my name directly with locks for signatures. So you'd be authorizing my signature on those spots as well.
So it's it's essentially all the other spots through here.
Correct.
The Federal Funding Accountability and Transparency Act, the EEOC stuff, the all of this, the additional OGR conditions for law enforcement agencies. That would be signed by you, not by the chief?
That is correct, yes. I'm the chief procurement officer, so it wouldn't be an unusual thing that contracting with the authorization of the board be signed by the CPO. So that's what you have before you.
Even the overtime policy for sub recipients receiving federal funds?
Well, pursuant to the job descriptions approved by the Board of Selectmen, the chief of police puts policies together, and then for day to day oversight, the town administrator position sits in that seat. So yes, that would be an appropriate thing for me to sign.
Okay, anything else, Veronica?
No, that was it. I just there were a lot of signatures through here, and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, that's a pretty that's a pretty thick one.
Grant was already applied for, but it hasn't been.
It's been applied for and awarded. This would be our acceptance of it and and signing the requisite documents to support the the way we would oversee it and run it.
So I moved that we saw that Jim signed the Massachusetts Standard Contract Form and the grant application. But you're telling me the grant application has already happened?
This entire packet is the form and the grant application. So it's the the sub recipient grant conditions. So it's part and parcel of the application is to have the the execution of the the sub recipient.
The fact documentation, because it says that the grant has been awarded. Okay, so this is this is in order to accept the grant. Okay, all right. It wasn't clear to me what was happening here. Okay.
All right, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Good job, chief.
Thank you, chief. Thank you very much. I'll be listening in if you need anything else.
Okay, nice decorations behind. Very good touch in the back.
Got to give kudos to the wife on that. You wouldn't want to know. It'd be milk crates if it was up to me.
You see what you're looking at for me, so. All right, and the 3.1 appointment, so point Prima Golda to a library tech. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we appoint Prima Golda as a library tech effective December 8, 2020, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and query check.
And I'll second that.
And I assume these have no probationary period. Is that correct?
They are not part of a union. There is still an outstanding personnel policy and procedure manual that there's some debate over whether or not library employees come under it. So when we've done library employees, before, we've not included that provision.
All right, so I move that we appoint Prima Golda as a library tech effective December 8, 2020, contingent upon the passing of a medical exam and query check.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 3.2 appoint Brett King as on-call captain. Can I get a motion here, please?
Yes, I move that we appoint Brett King as an on-call captain for the Townsend Fire EMS Department effective December 8, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
I'll second that. Any questions here?
Not for me, no.
No, I talked to the fire chief about this as well, so. Did I second that?
You didn't.
Okay, I'm sorry. I've been on the phone all day. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Congratulations, Mr. King. 3.3 Audit Committee in Town Properties Committee Appointments, if applicable. Do we have?
You do. You have the Finance Committee looking for Carolyn to be appointed to Capital and Lynn Pinkerton to auditing.
Okay.
So we're kind of taking so we're kind of taking 3.3 and 3.4 together? Is that what we're doing?
No, you've got a selectman member under 3.4.
Okay, so don't we also have a selectman member under the Audit Committee?
I don't recall that you do, actually.
No, we don't. I don't think we do.
We haven't assigned anybody, but the Audit Committee is some one person. There shall be a three-member Audit Committee in the town of Townsend, appointed by the Board of Selectmen annually in December. The Audit Committee shall be comprised of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Finance Committee, and one registered voter in the town who has finance experience, preferably municipal finance experience. So so if we take the Audit Committee first, we would then move to assign Lynn, correct? Is she the person that?
Lynn is the Audit Committee, yes. Yep.
And to the Audit Committee as this Finance Committee representative?
Correct.
And then we could appoint someone from the Board of Selectmen as the Board of Selectmen representative, correct? So I move, I'm looking at them. I move that we appoint Lynn Pinkerton to the Audit Committee for, I'm looking to see if there's a term, for a term from December 15, 2020 through November 30 of 2021. I assume it's a one-year appointment.
It is.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
Did you want to pick up the select board member now as well?
Okay, so we need a select board member on Capital and also a select board member on the Audit Committee. And I am good with either or both.
I did I did Capital my first year. Don did it his first year, so I don't know if something you want to go through. It's kind of eye opening.
As the planning board rep last.
Oh, okay.
So I have already done Capital as well.
It's up to you. I don't care. We're going splits here, so whichever one it is.
I move that we appoint Veronica Cal to the Audit Committee for the term of December 15, 2020 through November 30, 2021.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. I have no issue doing the Capital Plan, at least through the beginning of this year.
I think it's pretty much done by the beginning of March.
It is. It's usually done before the budget is, so.
I think that, yeah, I think they have to turn in the Capital Plan to the Board of Selectmen by the beginning of March, or maybe it's number of days back from the annual town meeting. I'm not sure.
So I'll take the appointment if you want to make the motion.
I move that we appoint Wayne Miller as the Board of Selectmen representative to the Capital Planning Committee in accordance with Chapter 14 of the Townsend Bylaws. So I guess that means until.
It's done. And I'll second that. All those in favor? I think Veronica, you froze up there.
You're frozen again, Veronica. She keeps coming back and fading out again.
I think I froze. Okay, now I'm back. Froze.
Yeah.
All right.
I got we got the motion in the second, so all those in favor.
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
All right, we also have to appoint the Finance Committee member to the Capital Planning Committee.
Who's that, Jerr- Jerralyn?
All right, so I move that we appoint Jerralyn to the Jerralyn Bazikas to the Capital Planning Committee in a court as the Finance Committee representative to the Capital Planning Committee in accordance with Chapter 14 of the Townsend Bylaws.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Yes.
Wayne Miller, yes.
All right, so the only other thing I have on this is there's also a planning board member that needs to be appointed to the Capital Planning Committee. So has the planning board been notified of that?
I can check Thursday in the morning and see if Carolyn put that out. I don't know. But I can find out first thing in the morning.
Okay, so we could do that at our next meeting or the first meeting in January or whenever.
So we can do a tickler on that position and the citizen position on audit. So just kind of refresh those notices.
Okay, and the other thing is Finance Committee, are they fully, not Finance, Capital Planning, are they fully staffed now? Do you know?
I think with these last two, they are, right? I can't look online.
I'm not sure. That's okay. That's okay. Just if they are, if it isn't, then maybe just let, you know, let John Barrett know so that he could post that if need be.
Gotcha.
So. Oh. Is is there a wait? Is who's checking the Zoom waiting room? Is Hartley on still or Jerry?
Hartley is on.
I I believe that there might be people waiting to get into the waiting room. Yes, thank you. No? All right, okay, thank you. All right, that's all I have for Capital Planning and Audit. Oh, Town Properties. I think we also have an opening there. Highway never assigned anybody. They said they weren't going to.
Right.
So we might need to put out for one more person on Town Property.
I've got that here, too.
New licenses. Approve and sign outside of a meeting. All 2020 renewals for liquor licenses contingent upon a valid certificate of inspection and receipt of required documentation and payment.
I'll second that. Any questions here? I saw a big pile in town hall. Okay, yeah, this is just the standard stuff we do at the end of the year. Yeah, so all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.2 approve inside outside a meeting. All 2020 renewals for Class 1, 2, and 3 licenses. Can I get a motion there?
I move that we approve and sign outside of a meeting. All 2020 renewals for Class 1 to be of required documentation and payment.
And I'll second that. Any questions here? Okay, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.3 approve and sign outside of meeting. All 2020 renewals for common licenses. Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve and sign outside of a meeting. All 2020 renewals for common vidler licenses contingent upon receipt of required documentation and payment.
And I'll second that. Any questions here? All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
And Wayne Miller, yes. 4.4 approve and sign outside of meeting. All 2020 renewals for entertainment licenses. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve and sign outside of a meeting. All 2020 renewals for entertainment licenses contingent upon receipt of required documentation and payment.
Now, second that. Anything here? All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.5 declare the following as as surplus with a value TBD in conjunction with the department head, chief, and procurement officer. So just do we take these all as one motion, Jim, or do we have to have to do them individually?
No, that's fine. One motion.
This is 4.5, correct? All right, so do I need to read all of these or? I will.
So people can can hear and if they're listening, have an interest.
I move that we declare as surplus with a value to be determined in conjunction with the department head and chief procurement officer for the Water Department, one 17-inch monitor, three computer towers that are inoperable, mixed scrap metal consisting of 2,500 pounds of cast iron, 50 pounds of copper, 400 pounds of clean brass, and 100 pounds of mixed metal brass. And for the Board of Health, two 20-foot metal containers and two 40-foot trailers.
I'll second that. Any questions here?
No.
All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. All right, 4.6 review and approve 2021 legal holidays. So just a simple motion, Jim, to accept.
It is usual, just acknowledging what the legal holidays are coming here.
Can I get a motion then?
Do you want me to make the motion and then talk?
Yeah, I mean, just keep it consistent.
Okay, I move that we approve the 2021 legal holidays. I thought there were. Well, maybe not as listed. Would I make a if I I have a question, so.
Okay, I'll second I'll second the motion. What's your question?
Okay, so wasn't there a holiday that came out for June that we were sent a memo about? And it's I don't see it on here.
There was a memo on Juneteenth coming on holiday, and we're awaiting guidance on that one still. We saw the original memo come out, but we haven't seen it appear on the state listing. So once we have officially seen that, then we can have that added to the list. But as of right now, we don't have that officially. There's also, there was an executive order issued just this past weekend regarding Christmas Eve being a federal holiday. We've not seen anything on that officially either, so this is what we know officially.
And what was the holiday this past weekend?
Chris Christmas Eve. President Trump, President Trump issued an executive. President Trump, President Trump issued an executive order saying Christmas Eve is a federal holiday.
For this year.
Yeah, that's not clear, so that's why we don't have it as anything real.
Well, that's interesting. Okay, only because, only because I know a federal employee who is having a federal holiday on Christmas Eve and was just told that like yesterday. So. So, okay. And you're saying it's not official yet?
Well, I, I've seen an executive order, but I've not seen anything come out of the MMA acknowledging the applicability of it. There have been a lot of executive orders that I've seen that appear and then disappear as quickly as they came, so.
And we're talking about the 2020 Christmas Eve, correct?
Correct.
And so that was on my question list, separate from the 2021, so.
If it is, if it is, it's not necessary for you to have voted it. This is more just informational. We put it up on the website. It's available for people to see what the holidays are. So if between now and Christmas Eve, there is something that solidifies around Christmas Eve, it'll be something that'll just be granted as a federal right. It doesn't require a vote of the board. So this is really just more information.
Okay.
And Saturday, Christmas is on a Saturday next year, so I don't think it's kind of a moot.
It is a moot point for next year. So it's this year that's in question. So I had questions about that, but let's, let's go with the motion for 2021 and approve the 2021 legal. I move that we approve the 2021 legal holidays as listed.
And I'll second that.
Veronica Cal, yes.
All those in favor? Wayne Miller, yes.
With the understanding that we come back for Juneteenth if need be. Okay, and then for this year, I was, I was curious as to, was the day after Thanksgiving a holiday for town employees this year?
It would depend on which town employees you are referencing, and it would be referred to in their respective contracts, so.
I thought Town Hall was closed on the Friday after Thanksgiving, was it not? I wasn't in town. I have no idea. I'm just curious.
Yeah, people were here. The building itself was closed, and I think by and large, that goes to the fact that the Town Hall Employees Contract does say the day after Thanksgiving, but it's not uniform across each bargaining unit, so it would depend on which group.
I know that in the past years that the Board of Selectmen have granted that as a holiday. Usually there, there's some discussion of it in early November, and same with Christmas Eve.
Well, there have been discussions about closing the building and allowing people to use their accrued time. But I'd have to look back and see the specific contract language as to what's in place now versus what may have been in place in prior years.
Okay. All right. All right, so I was going to suggest that we do Christmas Eve as the holiday, just declare it that. But I, I guess that it's a moot point if it's a federal holiday, so we won't go there. End of questions for me.
Okay. On the 4.7, discuss formation of the committee open space plan.
I'm the one to put this on the agenda. I don't know if you had anything on this.
I have nothing.
Okay, is, our plan is up, so to speak, in 2020. And it's good to have a current open space plan, especially if you're applying for grants that might have to do with open space. So, and I know that I was appointed, I guess it was last September. Lindsay had started putting an open space committee together a year ago before she left as Land Use Coordinator. It is typically the Land Use Coordinator that does this and coordinates it. And so the Planning Board had appointed me, I had that date for last week, but I, I don't have it here for this week's meeting. They had appointed me to the Open Space Committee roughly a year ago. I don't know, Jazz, if you remember that, but I was appointed. And so, but the, the committee never came off when, went anywhere because Lindsay resigned. So I, we don't have a Land Use Coordinator, so I'm assuming that this goes to the Board of Selectmen to coordinate. And I think that we should consider putting together a group of people to look at the open space plan. I know it runs out in point, but I'm not saying that we should do this today, but perhaps by the end of January, we could, you know, look for, I wouldn't be the Planning Board representative at this point. We would need someone else from the Planning Board, and it might be something that we could work on in the spring with the goal of having it together by the end of the summer. That would be my thought on this. I don't know if anybody, if you have any thoughts on this one?
Oh, no, I mean, I think simply asking for that reappointment and and share posting for the committee piece.
Okay, so how about if we get together a posting for the Open Space Plan Committee? And we could probably look and see what Lindsay did a year ago, correct? And get that out to all the boards and put a, I, I know that there are community members as well that are typically involved with this. So can we put that together and maybe with the thought of appointing it in, say, February? I'm just thinking that there's a lot to do between now and February.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that. This obviously isn't a top priority, but.
All right, so I'd just like it to stay on, be put back on the agenda towards the end of January and perhaps get postings out so people know and Board know to assign someone.
Okay. Fine, that it? Okay, 4.8, discussion monthly reports and annual reports from department heads. I take it this one here's two?
It is. I, I guess my question on this is, I know that from being on boards for a while, that it's typically in January that we write a report for the annual report. So A, I'm not so sure we ever had an annual report published for the last fiscal year. So I'm wondering about the status of that and what we will be doing for an annual report going forward. I know that last year, the Planning Board, you know, Beth came to us with a, we, we approved a LRB for the annual report for last fiscal year. And so I, I guess I'm curious about where that stands and where we're going for next year.
Certainly. Last year, you are correct, there was no annual report filed or created. There are documents that were received, very much like the one you referenced from the Planning Board. But in the height of COVID, we were out of here during the time when that normally would have been compiled and finalized. It will be done this year. The, I think the memo already went out. I can check in the morning from Carolyn and see if, in fact, she sent it out. I believe it went out to all departments already, though.
Okay, so if it hasn't, I guess we should get that out then, correct? And we're just not going to publish an annual report for last year?
I think the, the last discussion that Carolyn and I had at a Department Head meeting with folks is to actually do a double this year. So take all the information from last year and combine it perhaps as an appendix to the, in their calendar year, not fiscal year, but the, the calendar year 20 annual report. Effect happening 19 as an appendix.
Okay, that, that makes sense, kind of an abbreviated annual report for last year. Okay. Yeah, so that was the annual report. I just wanted to know where that stood. And then for monthly reports, I read this in Policies and Procedures, that there should be monthly reports from all department heads?
Yeah, they, they are coming in. We see police, fire, DPW. I don't know that we've seen a water one, which is understandable. They've had interim down there for a, a long while. But those come in. I'm sorry?
No, go ahead.
I think for a while, they were being printed and left in the board's mailboxes. That was asked to not be done to waste the paper, but instead to have them available electronically. So I'll find out what the status of that is and can PDF them and get them out to everybody. Everybody, the two of you, as they come in.
So I would, I would like to receive those monthly reports. I know I received them once, but I, I not since, you know, maybe August, September, I'm not exactly sure. Once I received them email, through email, which is fine. So I'd just like to request that they be emailed. They don't need to be hard.
Excellent. That, that process gets dusted off again.
Can I, I don't know, have a name for this. I just have a phone number, because, could you go unmute, please? We're getting a lot of feedback.
Or is it just a phone number?
There's two phone numbers there that I see.
Let's see. I can mute them right like that.
Thank you. Okay, on to 4.9, discussion real estate tax breaks for volunteer board members.
Okay, this was me, too. This was something that a, a board member brought to me and said, is, is it possible if we were to do something like that, we might be able to get more volunteers who were willing to come forward and serve on boards? And they also said that they thought, and I know the senior center right now, volunteers in the senior center isn't exactly happening. But I was also told, and I didn't confirm this with anybody, I just listened and said I'd bring it forward, that volunteers in the senior center get write-offs on taxes? Is that true? And then I said, well, is that, is some senior write-off thing, which I don't, even though I'm senior, I don't know really much about, so.
Okay, I, I can tell you that statutorily, the ability to, to write off or give a discount on real estate taxes is very limited. There are certain exemptions for veterans, for instance, that are codified in the law. The Senior Tax Workoff Program that you reference is a local option for communities, and we do have such a program here in Townsend. And there are a number of people that avail themselves to it. There are age and income requirements, so you have to be older than a number and in order to qualify. That equals up to $1,500 off of your annual real estate tax bill. So that's been in existence in town for well longer than I've been around, and probably, I know in the Commonwealth, at least since the early 90s is when it was started. In terms of volunteers getting a discount off taxes, it's not available under the law. I did reach out and speak with council just to make certain that he wasn't aware of something that, that. What you do see in some communities is a stipend is paid, which is, I mean, the net effect is this view for people stepping up and serving in their community. At that point, it's, it's not quite volunteering, I guess, so the word, you know, wouldn't really apply. But you generally would have seen that in the 90s and into the early aughts, and they've started really fumbling away. But you would see primarily Select Board, Board of Health, and maybe Planning Board. That would be the three that you would see getting a stipend. But they're, they're few and far between where you see that even now. But if there is any consideration for some economic benefit, it would have to be in the form of a payment voted in the budget and not as a reduction in taxes.
Okay. All right, and you're saying that historically elected boards, not volunteer?
That's generally been the case. I, I can't speak across all communities, but anytime I've seen the discussion about stipends, it's generally been in the context of removing them. That's, it's always been elected, in my experience.
Okay. All right. I guess that answers that. I'll let you know if there are more questions to go with that or anything like that. All right, thank you.
All right, 4.10, review, approve, execute license agreement for the addition of the senior center. I know we left this on the last one that you, a couple of things you're looking for.
Well, at the last one, you and I were both going to take it and review it and come back to this meeting. That's where I thought it was.
Yeah, and I'll refer, after I talked to Adam about it, too, a little bit.
Veronica, yours was emailed out on, I was just going to say, yours was emailed out on the me, the day of the meeting of the 8th. So Wayne has had the benefit of seeing yours with your comments that are in track changes from Adam as well. So that's, those are the only remaining pieces to confirm based on the document you sent over.
Yeah, so, so the liability, well, starting at the top, the name of the corporation, I'm good with whatever the correct thing is that goes there. I have no idea what it is. Adam sent confirmed the identity. And then the next one was Exhibit C. I want to talk about that a little bit. Not in detail. Number five, those were the changes that I put in there together with Adam, because he had questions on some of that as well. The limits of liability, that's an Adam thing for you to confirm, Jim, I believe.
That squared away.
And then what he, we needed an Exhibit C. I, when I reviewed what we had gotten for that meeting in November, that we had just received it. I, I had asked, I, I asked for Exhibit C, and there was no Exhibit C. So I, and I wrote it. I mean, basically, I got back Exhibit C is up to you. And in his thing to me, he said that there should also be something about a construction sequence. So I put that together because Adam said that he did not write Exhibit C, but we did. So are you good with Exhibit C, Wayne? Or do you have anything?
Yeah, I, I didn't have anything else to add based on yours, so.
I, I have no idea if that construction sequence makes sense. I made it up.
Both your Exhibit C and your construction sequence are spot on.
Okay. All right, so.
Can I get a motion to approve outside of session? Sign out of session, please?
I move that we vote to approve and then sign out of session the license agreement with confirmation of the identity of the donor and confirmation of the liability limits.
Okay, and I'll second that. Excuse me, anything, all those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 4.11, health insurance plan joint purchase agreement follow-up. This was from the earlier this month.
It was, and you have a copy, a copy of a draft of a joint purchase arrangement document in your packets. I've been on one conference call with the consultant and with representatives from Templeton and Dunstable, the two other communities contemplated here, the town ministries in both communities. And some of the notes you see in track changes here on the document are mine, and they come from that conversation. I've looked at several others, the Ash West, JPA, the Gateway JPA. There's another down on the Cape. This is pretty consistent with everything they've got going there. The one area that this is different or will be different by design is that when they get bigger, there's some consideration of weighted votes based on number of insured souls. So if you have a school system that's a member and they have 250 insured employees, their vote for certain things carries more weight. That's not the case being proposed here. It's being proposed, one community, one vote. We are all relatively close in terms of the number of insured that we have. Obviously, that could be changed at some point in the future if one of the school districts, whether Groton. could be changed at some point in the future if one of the school districts, whether Groton Dunstable or North Middlesex wanted to join in. But as of right now, they, they don't have an interest.
Who doesn't have an interest?
I'm sorry?
Who doesn't have an interest?
North Middlesex School District, the Groton Dunstable District, there was some outreach made as well, just being a regional in this north central.
And they're part of Dunstable.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought, I thought he had mentioned five towns.
Yep. Pepper was being considered. And that's, they're currently part of a JPA, the Minas Gerais group, as is the North Middlesex School District. So they're staying put where they are. So we end up just, at least in the, the initial stages, considering just the three communities. And for those that didn't hear the presentation of the last meeting, kind of the nickel tour here is when we go out to bid for health insurance for our employees, we don't have the ability to, to present to the marketplace our actual claims data because we are too small. The law requires us to have more than 100 employees in order to compel the insurance company to give us all of our raw claims data. And it's that type of data that would really drive the, the actuarial analysis of those that are looking to bid and buy into our business. So anytime we go on the marketplace, it's really a, a bit of a wing and a prayer, and they have to build a factor in for what they don't know. If we did a JPA, and this is really the purpose behind the JPAs, is for smaller groups to get bigger buying power. So if we had a JPA of these three communities, we would then have a sufficient number of insured employees that would require the insurance companies to provide the detailed claims data. And then when you go on the marketplace, obviously, with that level of granular data, they'd have a better shot at giving you real numbers.
Wayne, do you have questions or can I? I have questions.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm all for this just to, because one, it's going to save us money and it's going to keep our premiums down for the employees. So.
Are we certain of that?
It, like the guy said, it's not guaranteed, but it's highly unlikely that it would, wouldn't be.
Okay. So I, I guess, so I have, I have questions about decisions, and then I have questions about the documents. So I guess the first one is, has council reviewed this or does council review this?
Council would review this if you, at the last meeting, you wanted to see a draft of a document to consider whether you want to still be playing along or not. If, if you decide tonight that you want to continue to pursue it, we'd get this into council's hands. We would schedule a consultant to come back at your next meeting and drill down into detail on any questions you have or council had based on council's review of the document. This is really, you heard a lot, you saw a PowerPoint last time, sounded nice. This is that next level of detail. If it still sounds like something you want to take the next step on, then we would have the consultant back in and have this reviewed by council between now and that meeting.
So my, my next question is, do the employees want this? Have they been queried? Same with the union. I don't know if they get a say in this or not, but just do they want this? Are they good with this? Or would they rather pay more for, perhaps pay more? I mean, because he was talking about Blue Cross and Blue Shield and how apparently last year we got a good rate because we didn't do this. I don't know. That's what I took away.
Last year, last year, we actually had an opportunity to leave Blue Cross, go with a different carrier for a lesser rate. But there was a hesitancy based on a number of things. Part of it was reluctance for the employee groups to leave Blue Cross, which is pretty common. And the other was it, the offer came right in March, when the wheels were coming off of being able to put everybody in a room and actually have a discussion about these things. So we ended up staying status quo with Blue Cross last year. The expectation is that whether we stay alone or join a JPA, that there's going to be a good number offered this year. The marketplace is that the carriers have been very aggressive. What you get between staying alone and a JPA is just a greater level of security for the carrier to give you the, the best number because they actually can see all of the underlying claims data. If we're alone, they can't. So they'll, they'll, they'll be aggressive, but not nearly as comfortable or confident. So not quite as aggressive as if they set out the numbers.
So what do the employees think?
As of right now, unless and until you say you want to go forward, we wouldn't convene what's called the IAC, the Insurance Advisory Council. The IAC is, is a creation of Mass General Law, Chapter 32B. And you take one representative from each employee union. The contract employees and the non-union employees don't get a seat at the table under the law. It's been my practice to have a seat for those otherwise not represented groups at the table in communities where I've done this. And you have that dialogue at that point. There is no veto power that the employees have in terms of this back end business side of things. If you got to the point of changing levels of benefits, for instance, right now we have a $0 plan. So every dollar is covered from dollar one. We don't have a deductible. It's very unusual. It's a very rich plan. If we go to change that plan and put in a, you know, a 250, $500 deductible, 250 per individual, 500 per family, still very low. We would have to use the IAC vehicle under the law to negotiate around those issues. If you can't come to agreement around terms and conditions of the policy through the IAC, you can do other things as the chief executive board and impose changes. But there's a, there's a ramping up of those, those steps towards getting to that end result. But for this type of a business decision, there is no veto power, but you would definitely want to have that discussion.
Okay. So the next one is, when does this need signed? I mean, it's not complete, certainly. I wouldn't, I mean, I feel like it needs way more work. I was, you know, it's the same agreement that's being signed by all the towns that would go into this, correct? This is the same agreement. So it's being in conjunction, done in conjunction with Templeton and Dunstable?
Right. I mean, this, this is not meant to look like a, an executable agreement. This is still very much draft. I mean, emblazoned across the document itself says draft. But yes, at the end of the day, when everybody is certain they want to go forward, this needs to be the identical document that everybody signs. So we're not close to there yet, but you may recall the consultant said that they'd like to be out into the marketplace in January. So we would be looking to revisit this at the next meeting with the consultant and having had council's review and comment. And if at that point you want to go forward, we would take the next step for your January meeting to have any comments from council and/or the board worked into the document in consultation with the other two communities, reach consensus on what looks like the final document, bring it back via consideration at your second meeting in January. That's, that's if you want to go forward.
I have a little bit of a concern about the fact that two towns have dropped out of this. Where does that leave us with bargaining power? I mean, I know that it gives us the access to the data that you're talking about, but.
I wouldn't say that two, I wouldn't say that two have dropped out. I would say that the consultant had been looking at our area and communities to have a discussion about. So dropping implies they were ever in. I don't think that anyone was ever in any more than we're in right now.
Okay. And why wouldn't we join an existing group?
A couple of reasons. One is control. So right now you would be one of three. So you'd have the ability to have greater influence in decisions being made by the JPA versus if you bought into the Minas Gerais group where there were already 18 communities. So that, that's the primary reason. The other is just geographically. You know, obviously, you'll recall the consultant talking about the pricing of medical care for communities that are inside the 128 belt and between 128 and 495 even. And we're outside of that. So being in our own group out here, it's easier to identify what the true costs are for someone using our medical resources versus having to pay for the, you know, the bleeding out of, you know, communities that are using the Boston resources primarily.
All right. I have a question on the document. It's on page three, Article Four Administration, the board. Who would be, all right, so the appropriate public authority as defined in MGL, Chapter 32, blah, 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 each participating governmental unit shall appoint one member of the board and one alternate representative. How do those appointments get made?
The select board. Yeah. I mean, the select board are the authority under Chapter 32B for health insurance. So you would either select one of yourself and another as an alternate, or select a staff person, you know, the treasurer who administers our health benefits currently. That's the office where this is administered. So maybe the treasurer as an alternate. You can look at the, the regional effort within the Shoba Valley Regional Dispatch where the, the town administrator was named as the board rep with the police chief as the alternate. So it's your choice as the executive committee in town.
Sorry, taking notes. All right. I don't know about you, Wayne, but I'm not ready to make a decision on this today.
One's not being sought today. What's being sought today is, do you want to stop and not consider any further? Or do you want to go the next step and have council review and get in the room with questions with the consultant at your next meeting?
Well, if we do that, and then the decision is no, are we burning bridges with the guy that does our, you know?
No, he, he's going to have our business regardless. You know, he's, he's going to get his, his pay, his commission irrespective of whether we're JPA forms. He represents each of the three communities that are currently in consideration. So this doesn't impact his finances. He's just doing what we're paying him to do, which is find a way to get us the biggest bang for our health insurance buck.
Okay. So for me, what's important here, besides the wording in this document, is if, what I understood last time was that the employees would have Blue Cross and Blue Shield for one more year under this agreement. It would be available to them. After that, it wouldn't.
At a minimum. Yeah. At a minimum, it would be.
Yeah, there would be other things. Yeah.
Yeah. And then there would be options after that.
Blue Cross and Blue Shield will, will drop off after that. So I guess what I would want to know.
Yeah, no, no.
That's what I understood.
Okay. Well, it, it could be that Blue Cross would drop off. It could be that Blue Cross would stay on. The petition was meant to convey, and if it didn't clearly, let me say, that we couldn't put this into effect necessarily and negotiate everything to change out of Blue Cross, Blue Shield for the coming year. What this would do would be to allow us to get better information out of alternate carriers and quite candidly then be able to better leverage Blue Cross through Maya. And it's not Blue Cross we're dealing with. We're dealing with Maya, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency. They are our carrier. They're the ones that set the rate and, you know, do all of those things. You'll recall that the consultant said that they carry a certain amount of money within their annual budget to be able to offer better rates for communities, you know, that are having a competitive push. So we would be Blue Cross for this year coming. And then it could be that Blue Cross would recognize the value of keeping three communities and not want to lose them. Maya, when I say Blue Cross, and they would continue to be competitive. Those would be discussions that would take place going forward.
I, I guess what I need to know is, where do the employees stand on this? That's just, that's what I would like to know before going much forward. Because we can't guarantee anything. You know, it's just, do we want to take a shot at this or not? And maybe it works well for the employees and maybe it doesn't.
One thing that we're, we're, we should be relatively certain of is, what we've been doing isn't, we are one of the few communities that still has a no deductible plan. The employees are aware of this. We've had discussions about the fact that we do have some plan design work to do. And it's going to mean additional expense out of pocket, perhaps being offset by less of an increase in rates. But something has got to give in health insurance in the town of Townsville. You know, there, there's, there's this Cadillac tax that was talked about for years and years and years since the Affordable Care Act went to effect that said, if you as a municipal government are offering a benefit plan that is more rich in benefit than the standard offering of the ACA, you can choose to continue that, but we're going to tax you for it for offering the Cadillac plan. That data has been moved repeatedly, the penalty date. I don't even know right now what the new movable target is, but something is going to change in health insurance for the employees. You just want to best position the town to get the biggest bang for the buck, which as Wayne said, also means the corresponding 25% the employees pay. They see the benefit as well.
Well. I guess there is no harm in getting a document that looks a little bit more, you know, get things ironed out with the draft, as long as there's no issue with us saying no if we vote on it, you know, next time.
There is no, there is no issue with saying no. It should be stated that if one of the three say no, there may not be the full 100 insured souls that would be necessary for a JPA to be viable. But that's not, that's not our concern. Our concern is if we think it's best to be in, we should be in. If we think it's not, irrespective of the fact that that also means that they're out, then we should decide that we're out. But I just wanted to make that point that if we do decide that we're out, it likely is that the whole thing is, is not viable.
Okay. So I, I think we should invite him and Adam. I don't know, next week is kind of tough, probably first week in January.
Gotcha. You okay with that, Veronica?
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable.
Perfect. All right. On to five one.
Can we get some information? Can we get some information on what, what the employees leaning is? I mean, if they want us to go forward and, you know, see what this, you know, if they're ready to jump in and see what the market will bring them, good or bad, then, you know, if, if we could get numbers and make a decision, it would be a no brainer. But we can't get numbers. So we don't know.
Right. And I just, I just want to make it clear to, to members of the board because you are the board today. There was a different board yesterday, and there may be a different one tomorrow. But it is, it is not within the purview of the employee groups to make these decisions. This is entirely.
I understand that. But I would want to take that into consideration. I know it's our decision.
Okay.
But if the employees are willing to say, look, will, we want to stick with what we have? Will we understand there are adjustments? Then, you know, anyway, there you have it.
Okay. I can, between now and that meeting in January, see if we can't get the IAC together and have the consultant come in and do. I know he's done it in at least one of the other communities already with their IAC. They're a little further down the road in the decision making than we are. But I'll, I'll see if we can't get that. So that'll allow you to have that information in hand when we have the meeting with the consultant and council.
That would be good. Thank you.
Okay. On to fund five one. Town administrative updates and reports. Jim, fire away.
Yes, sir. Treasure collector update job posting. So for those that aren't aware, our treasure collector, Anna Noyes, gave her notice of resignation. She's taking a position in the Athol Royal Stan School District as the payroll director. in the Athol Royal Stan School District as the payroll director. And her last day on the, on the payroll, on the books as an employee is Christmas Eve Day. Her last physical day actually was last Friday, so she is using accrued time for the final two weeks. She will be making herself available to us when we have a question, whether it's as simple as where is the stapler, to more complex about any particularly given file. We have the Assistant Treasure Collector, Rebecca Hershey, who has been in the position of holding down the fort in the past. And we've also had our now, two times ago, former Treasure Collector Barb Tierney, who has come in on Fridays. She is a certified treasure collector and familiar with our book of business and how things are done. She has come in on Fridays in the past for negotiated fee for her time. And she, I reached out to see if she had an interest in helping us along, if it was your wish. And she said that she'd be willing to entertain that as well. So I know Veronica, you and I have talked about, you know, what is, what is the process if an employee works out of grade? So, you know, in this case, if Rebecca were to, you know, be compelled to do things above her pay grade, you know, what's the benefit? And that's something I think that the board would have a conversation with the union about. There is no specific language in the contract that Rebecca's position is in that references out of grade work. In the past, she's been, she's been author, authorized for overtime work. So additional compensation at an overtime rate. I don't know if that would be of any interest to her, but that's something that can be done within the contract as it currently exists without any negotiation. So I would look for a little feedback from the board on how they'd like to proceed with the interim period. Do you want to consider Barb? Have a discussion with her on coming on Fridays? Do you want to do a combination of something for Rebecca and Barb? Or roll forward if Rebecca feels strongly enough about it, sit down with the union and have a conversation about what that looks like?
I'd like to look at both. Is it an option? Just have an option?
I guess my question is, is Rebecca doing the job now? I mean, Anna's gone. So is Rebecca doing the job right now?
Yeah, Rebecca would be doing the job now no differently than she would if Rebecca, if Anna was taking her regular vacation. So for the next couple of weeks, Rebecca would be doing what she normally would be doing. She and Anthony would pick up the slack. And then when Rebecca vacations, Anthony and Anna would pick up the slack. So it's kind of how the workload is, is shared around the table when somebody's on vacation. Beyond that two week period is when there would be something different expected.
Okay, so. All right, so I guess I would want to know what's involved with getting a letter from the union to authorize payment for Rebecca. And I don't know, Barbara on Fridays, is that useful if Rebecca's doing the work every day?
Lori's position as the town accountant is that it was very useful when Barb was able to do it in the interim last time. That while Rebecca can keep the pieces moving, there were certain things that she is, for instance, she's not a certified collector treasurer, so there are things that she cannot do. Barb is, and there are things that she could do. For instance, we have not had what has become an annual tax title sale with a group like Talage. We were prepared, apparently, according to Anna, to do that in January. She's obviously not going to be here. Rebecca couldn't undertake that work. But if Barb were here, she could. So I think Lori's perspective.
Have we had any, when did the posting get done? And have we had any response?
The, the posting went up, I think, the day or the day after I sent the notice out to you guys. So it's been probably a couple of weeks. We have three candidates that have applied. There is one seated treasure collector, one seated assistant treasure collector, and, excuse me, two seated treasure collectors, one assistant and one who was in a position until six months ago, who's looking to get back, has expressed interest but has not officially applied. So we have three in hand and likely another on the way.
Okay, I think. I lean towards just having Rebecca do what she can do until we get someone in, if it's quick. If it goes longer, then I guess, because there are things that Rebecca can't do, it would be good to have Barbara.
That's why I think, I think. I think we should just reach out and say, hey, this is what we're thinking. We might, might need you. Not commit to anything, obviously, but, you know, what, what a rate would be, because I want to see what that is. If she were to do.
I would definitely want the letter for Rebecca to be paid for the extra work that she is doing. So.
Okay, well, we are, we are in an executive session later this evening under the Afsmi contract, so it would be appropriate to have a more detailed discussion about it at that point. Next, we have 5.1.2, the 97 Main Street. And there is no update to offer, other than I've still been in contact with the consultant through MRPC regarding getting the Phase Two, Part Two redo. And it's, it's nothing that has been scheduled as of yet. But we are approved by the EPA out of the grant funds that they've submitted through to MRPC. I believe I've shared that email with you from EPA. So we're just waiting on the scheduling.
So I guess what I'd like to do on this is to really, we're waiting on the scheduling, but I'd like to have a work session with a full board and, you know, discuss this at some point. So could we do that? See where it is, what we're doing, where the monies are coming from, and to discuss plans for futures.
I think once we get further information, I think that's prudent.
So maybe schedule that after January 23rd?
Yeah, hopefully we know more by then.
A work session. Okay. All right.
Gotcha. Next, you have 5.13 Finance Summit Follow-Up. So we have a finance summit meeting, and this would have been a discussion we would have had last week had we gone forward. So the, the ask here is just looking for your general guidance on the budget memo. So the directive of the, the board proper for budget purposes for fiscal '22. So those memos would normally be out this week. And I'd like to true to form, get it out this week. But I don't want to presume what your position is regarding direction for departments in their submittals. So I'd love to hear from you.
Okay, I'm not prepared for this for tonight. So it's, I looked at, I've looked at the budget process, and it says, so this is the Set the Policy, Priorities and Other Directives for the town, correct? Did we lose Jim? Did we lose me?
No, I'm still here.
Are you there, Wayne?
I'm here.
Jim?
I don't see you. Must have dropped off.
Yeah, so is that what this is? The policy priorities and other directives for the town?
I believe it's, it's the.
So that.
Level setting, like a zero, zero, zero increase budget or a level set budget. That's what we're asking for. I think that's what we've done the last two years, anyway.
I. Because I do think we need to get a contract in place for employees that are working without one. Budget forms are sent to all departments, boards, and commissions, together with the guidelines.
Yeah, I mean, this is just to kick it off, to start that. And, you know, if we want to plan for, it doesn't lock anything in. It's just guidance on, you know, are we looking at a 10% budget cut? I don't know that, because we don't know what this year is yet. So I'm not sure if we are even able to make this recommendation tonight.
Well, I'm certainly not ready to make the recommendation tonight. But I know that we're kind of, by the end of November, these budget forms are supposed to go out to the departments, commissions, boards, blah, 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 according to the budget policy. So we are behind in that. Not a whole lot, but we are somewhat. So I guess I would want to have a discussion about that and see what guidelines have been set in the past, what the parameters are, those sorts of things. So. I don't know, Wayne. First week in January, is that too late? Is anybody going to do anything with these forms anyway before then?
I highly doubt it. If it's anything like my job, next week is going to be a very slow week. So.
And probably the weekend between Christmas and New Year's as well.
To my, to my point about this year's budget, I don't know if we are even in a position to give guidance right now. This is what we expect, so.
I think we are. I'm always ready to give guidance.
I think, I think we touched on this last time, is this, the school needs to be involved. So we need to, that representative.
Rob Templeton. Rob Templeton.
Yeah. I think we need to sit with him as well before we set guidance, because I have no idea what they're, where they're going to go.
Okay, so what do we do with this?
Mr. Chair, should I see if Rob can come for a very abbreviated discussion for the meeting of the 22nd? Just where they are to date, because I know they've, they've got a couple of iterations in to their budget. And the next formal meeting isn't going to be until the first week of January. But he should be able to say what it is they're pursuing.
Just, yeah, just a quick, brief one next week to, to get, because, I mean, that's 60% of our budget, right? So if they're looking at a big increase, then we got to take that from something else, right? So if you could set that up, that'd be great.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, next.
Next, we have Shared Streets, Veronica.
All right, so I have kind of a whole lot here. So the Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant application. We had originally thought that we would do the skating rink thing, but yeah, that's, we've kind of missed deadlines that would make that even possible. And is that a place making thing? So it's been rethought, and Beth Faxon and I are the representatives to MJTC. And we attended a meeting last week and came up with this plan. So we would like to have a virtual meeting, probably on Thursday, January 7th at 7:00 PM. We would like to have all the boards and commissions, so Parks and Cemetery, Highway, Water, Recreation Commission, maybe. I'm not sure if it fits, but why not? Conscom Planning Board, Rail Trail folks, and of course, the Board of Sluckman, and anybody else that I missed. The police could weigh in on this, and, you know, I don't know about fire, but certainly police. Because for Shared Streets and Spaces, the thought right now is to apply through the grant that is due January 29th with the award by February 21st. And look at things like access to the bike, the bike trail from the Jeff Street slot, both walking and biking access, and also from the Town Common to Depot Street. And one thought, so Chief, you may want to know about this, and Highway too, is to make Riverbank Terrace, or whatever it's called, and Jeff's one-way from coming in from West Townsend down to Route 13. So there's actually room for some sort of bike trail, walking path, whatever, on the side of that road. It wouldn't be, it would be one-way from the Town Hall, because you should be able to go in and out of the Town Hall both directions. So anyway, that's one thought. To have signage to Old Meeting House Park and Howard Park, so the people could park at the Common or Jeff Street and walk to those parks. So that's what we have in mind for that. More to come at a January 17th, January 7th meeting. We would also like to apply for Mass Trails. That has a February 1st deadline. And thoughts for that are kiosks and for these places. And, and also trail guides or maps, so that when people get to these places to walk or bike, that there are maps that they can, either QR codes or get in hand. And the third thing is the tip, the Transportation Improvement Plan, federal funding, which does require a match by the town for engineering usually. The time to get on the tip is January, February. And one possibility is sidewalks in the harbor area, especially to get for the bike trail, to do that section that where you come out onto the sidewalk, up past the church and back on the bike trail, that section. So to fund those sidewalks in there. And perhaps bike lanes from Timberlake Park area, South Row Road, onto the bike trail. So if, if in fact, there's a, a bridge that goes over at Old Meeting House Road, over the Squonk. So anyway, those are the thoughts, three grants to apply for in January. So we were thinking the first week, hold a virtual meeting for all the groups to see what's there, see who wants to work on what. Poll ideas the second week of January and pull them together, write for the grant the third week of January, because the last week of January is pretty much where you have to get it in. For the January 29th deadline, the February 1st deadline, and to talk to the people at MRPC and et cetera about the tip. So that's what we're thinking.
Okay, great. Knock yourself out.
So if that sounds right, I'm going to get to you, Jim, a flyer that can be sent out to all of these boards and commissions.
Absolutely. I can, I can get the link to that Zoom meeting on the flyer as well.
Oh, yeah. So that would be a Hartley thing to set up the Zoom. And I'll do a little PowerPoint that, so I'll screen share if that's possible.
Yeah, perfect.
You know, or I'll edit whoever, to Hartley to screen share. Either way, it'll be a quick PowerPoint, but just a little tiny bit on each of these grants and the ideas for them.
Perfect.
So, sound good?
Yep.
All right.
All right, next.
515 TCAM Update Report. You should have seen in the office, three letters of resignation from the three currently seated or three most recently seated members of the TCAM Board of Directors. So the.
And another.
Okay, they, they should have been over.
I honestly didn't look that hard today. I, I just picked up my pack and left, so.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
I, I went through that little bin there.
Okay, they, they may have been shipped down, they may have been shipped down to the town clerk as well because I know there was some discussion about whether they even belonged in the clerk's office because it's a private nonprofit, not a town board, but that'll make better sense in a moment. The, the bylaws of the corporation deal with how to fill vacancies. And with the exception of the initial three appointments made by the select board and the duration of those initial terms of appointment, all appointment goes to the authority, goes to the, the private nonprofit. But because these three are initial appointments, the way the bylaw reads is you have the ability, the responsibility to fill them. So there are three seats available and it is within your purview to fill them. So I know we've had some discussion informally offline about kind of shaking the bushes and seeing if anybody would be interested that you know of. So with your authorization, we'll post up the vacancies. And if you're aware of anybody that has an interest or if anybody that's following along at home is interested, we can have the link to TCAM's bylaws and the operating agreement between the town and TCAM proper available on the posting as well. So folks that have an interest can, can get out to those documents and take a look.
Yep, get it posted.
Yeah. So as of right now, there are three.
Yeah, definitely. When were, when are the resignations effective?
They were to have been effective at the next meeting of the Board of Selectmen when they could be presented. So that's right now.
And so who is running the organization in the interim?
Right now, there is one employee, Hartley. And Hartley and I are working together to keep the pieces all moving. But there, there was another bit of business that needed to be rectified by the corporation and that was rectified as of the tail end of last week. So on the, on the, the business front of things that we've spoken about, everything is been made whole and a status quo there. So we're starting with a fresh slate and looking for three, at least three, up to five interested souls to serve as directors of the cable nonprofit.
So question, how does that play with the Secretary of State if you have a nonprofit, profit corporation with no board members?
It's a good question and you have the ability to make an appointment or appointments this evening in the interim. The question then becomes whether or not those are still considered the initial appointments for which you retain control to fill. So I'd suggest that between now and your meeting next Tuesday, we get a more concrete answer to that. And perhaps we'll have names of interested people by Tuesday next week. If not, it may be that you as members of the select board sit in, in the interim, just so there is, there is legally a, a body sitting in the seat. But we'll, we'll have a better sense of clarity on that as of next week.
Can we have a financial report by next week?
I, I've asked that we get.
Corporate.
Absolutely. With live, with live documentation is, the request has been made and is being put together.
Okay, so. Okay, so we have a nonprofit corporation without a board as of right now.
Correct. And this has been being worked on with council. So, so council is, our town council is our town council.
I thought our town council didn't deal with it. You're talking about Adam or you're talking about the TCAM council?
No, I'm talking about our town.
I thought we, I thought. Sorry, it doesn't work well on Zoom. I thought that our town council didn't deal with media corporations. And that was why we hired a different council. There was Bill August and there was another guy. I can't remember the two names.
Bill, Bill. Bill Solomon.
And, and.
Right, Bill Solomon.
Bill Solomon is the one that reviewed the TCAM agreement, correct?
Solomon represented TCAM, August represented the town. But I have reached out to the town's council because this is a question for the selectmen. We have what we are expecting to be three resignations. And the select board pursuant to the bylaws of the corporation retain the appointing authority. Do you agree, Town Council? Because this is a question for this board at this time. He has reviewed it and he agrees. Belts and suspenders, I spoke with Bill August as well. Bill August also agrees that the bylaw as constructed leaves the authority for this refill of the initial appointments to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
So I guess we'll see where we end up next week. Get anybody to volunteer.
And ask council then what this does with respect to Secretary of State. And also my, my other thing is I would like to see a financial report and a financial accounting for the firm.
The financial report is coming from the accountant that is doing the, the legal accounting for the nonprofit that's been asked for and has been committed to be sent. And the issue of the Secretary of State, I can get on the call with, with Adam first thing and find out what that actually, what
What does that mean?
Real world impact that has. You know, you, you, my expectation is he's going to tell you that the, the corporation will continue to function. The employee that exists will continue until there's, all haste is, is exercised to get a board back in place above it.
Okay, so post, post.
Yes.
Great, next.
If anyone's listening or knows somebody that has an interest in cable programming, broadcasting, nonprofit work, we, we have, Veronica, I think it came from a conversation you and I had, we, we have reached out to Fitchburg State to their communications program, see if they, if they have anybody over there that's a Townsend resident that's interested. Obviously, the bylaws do require that you be a Townsend resident or affiliated with a group in Townsend in order to be eligible to serve.
Okay.
Okay, next.
All right, South Row Road Discussion Update. The update I can offer is, you should have each seen an email from the Conservation Commission. Several paragraphs either earlier this week or the tail end of last week where they've expressed that they have interest in it, but they have some additional outstanding questions, specifically is this being pursued as a CR, a conservation restriction or ownership in fee? If ownership by whom, if fee monitored and held by whom? So those are, those are easily answerable questions. The way this has been framed has been a donation of land to be owned in fee by the town. There's been no discussion necessarily of, of having a CR laid on top of it, but that could be something that the town wants to do. But, but we haven't really had that conversation. The Water Department has been brought into the discussion and having conversation with the superintendent today indicated that the Water Department is very interested in this parcel because a good portion of it sits in the Water Protection District. And they think that that would be an important piece for the town to protect and preserve. So I guess a vote of the board to agenda this for a consideration of a town meeting warrant article at the next available town meeting. And between now and then, I can work with our council and the owners' council to finalize the, the donation details.
So I have a motion.
Fire away.
I move that the Board of Selection, the Board of Selectmen, in conjunction with the Town Administrator, because Jim, you'll be doing most of the legwork on this, that the Board of Selectmen notify the attorney for the owners to express the town's desire to accept the donation of the 42 acre property at Zero South Row Road, map block lot 2451, contingent on acceptable negotiation with the property owners, meaning survey, right of way, access title, all the things that we don't know, and the acceptance of the gift of land by the town at the 2021 annual town meeting.
And I'll second that. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. Good, that's done.
Excellent. Next is 5.18 website updates.
We can figure out after, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead. There's a delay. Go ahead.
I was just moving on to, to 5.18. So if you're still on 517, go for it.
I am. I think that we should just take the land if we can't figure, we won't know the answers to all those questions until we get in contact with the owners.
Right.
And so, and we can figure out later where it goes.
Yeah, we just put, we just, we just put it on the warrant. Let's, let's just get it off our plate and move forward.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So that's that.
Website is the next one and Veronica has been doing as the board's liaison. Had several meetings virtually with the folks from the website. So Veronica, what you have to offer there?
Yeah, let's do website first and then go back to cash operations, 5.18.
Mr. Chair, could I be recognized, please?
Sure.
I, I was trying to speak up when you were going over the, the road. This is Todd Malanson. One of the things I'd like to see beyond, beyond what conservation wants to do with the conservation restriction, I'd like to have a water restriction placed on the property if the town receives it. You can do both. But I, I definitely.
Again, again, we, in, in talking with the superintendent today, I think that's his intention. So again, all, more stuff we can figure out as we move along.
Okay, and, and just as a point, we, we only found out about it last couple of days.
Yeah.
So.
Before, we'll keep you informed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Jim, you did skip over one, the cash operations.
Oh, yep. This is something that the last update was that Anna was working on it and Anna's note to you both indicated that she is.
Back on mute, please. Sorry.
I can get him.
Okay. Background. Thank you.
Anna had indicated in her, in her bullet points of things remaining, work plan remaining, that the cash operations would be on hold until the successor is come in. So.
Nothing there then.
Yeah, that's kind of a long-term thing. And I think it would, once the data comes in to sit down, have a work session on it. So.
That's fine. Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that. All right.
Next website.
Yeah, we, Carolyn and I have been working with Civic Plus with David Homick is our designer. And so we have the homepage pretty well set. We got the second pass of it today. I haven't looked at it yet. Carolyn may have, I don't know. We had requested him to do a few changes. We talked to him yesterday. And he, he has the new mockups for us and then we'll go to the pages. I guess my question for you, Jim, is where do we stand with the data being updated? Because I look at the pages and it's not up to date and it would be really nice if the data were up to date. I know some of the departments have updated, but if you look at. Pardon me?
I was gonna say, I know that Carolyn took your spreadsheet and she was pecking through it. So I can see what's, what's left on that spreadsheet that you put together and have her carve off a bit of time to sit there and knock them off before we do the conversion over.
Okay, because we are, I mean, we're hoping to change things so that the board members are in one place. The agendas and meetings are in one place and then you just link to that one place. Instead of having, oh, we got, we have it here, but not there. So, you know, it, so we're hoping we are, we will have that done. So we do need the data up to date as, as soon as we can. It'll probably be, well, we'll get the pages from him later this week, but then it becomes holidays. So we're looking at January. I'm assuming, I don't know if we are using COVID money for this or not, looking at what you sent me, Jim.
We, we have received notice from the folks at the CARES Act of the state level that notwithstanding that company that says that they have been paid already to do this for other towns, that they are not authorizing it. So as of right now, we've asked Lori to flag the fact that we've got this bill and look at the, there was a residual cable article from a couple of years ago. I think she said that she was going to look at that may have had a sufficient balance in it. So we'll, we'll know that. But moving forward, you know, we're going to continue to move forward. We just aren't going to be able to use that source.
So we don't have the December 30th deadline then? I mean, I was working on, I worked best on deadline and I was working on deadline for December 30th.
You can make believe it still exists if that gets you there, but no, we're not able to use those funds. So that deadline does not apply any longer.
So we, you know, I had wanted to have it up and running by January 1st. I think probably February 1st is more realistic. Good for time to get everything updated.
That's fine. Time, take, take more time to get it right.
It's getting there. We will have a different looking website. It's still Civic Plus. But if you look at Enfield, New Hampshire, that is the website that we're kind of following. So.
Great. Thank you for doing that. All right. Is that, that's it, Jim, for you?
It is indeed.
Okay, so on the 52 reports from liaisons, I'm in here for the Housing Trust. We had a meeting last week and Jim and I were both on it. Two big things out of it is the, the, the grants that we have to use for these, this, this, the money. They both expired December 31st. There's a very strong expectation that they will be extended at some point to, to take this into next year. That just hasn't happened yet. And the other piece was a discussion on, you know, making sure the word's out there. So we put it prominently on our webs. Forget flyers and get them to various town sites and kiosks. But to my knowledge, I believe those were made and placed. So it's really just getting the word out to make sure, you know, people know that this, this stuff is available if they do need it. So that's kind of the nickel. Good.
I have two questions. One is if there is, if something expires December 31st and it's extended at some point, could you be more specific on that?
We've asked, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the gentleman that's helping us. Manage this.
Okay, so there, there is an application in to extend the grant.
The chair of the committee has asked for the extension, yes.
Okay. And next question, the COVID relief funds that we received, are they in hand? And what did we wind up getting? Was it 40K or 100K?
They're, they're supposed to be, as, as in Boston, they're supposed to be dispersed this week. It was left as broad as that, but they'll be rolling the funds this week. They'll hit by wire. And we have been approved for the full hundred for the rental and mortgage assistance. So not the original 40, but the full hundred.
Oh, good. So here's my next question. Is this a reimbursement grant? Or is this a, you get all the money upfront and then you send back what you don't use?
My understanding, this is you get the money upfront, it hits your books and what you don't use, whenever the expiration is, whether it stays the end of December or whether it also gets extended, which is something that's in discussion nationally. Whenever the program ends, whatever balance is left after the, the tail or the trail, you're using. you usually have some number of weeks to still process, it goes back. And then the, the real accounting takes place. And there's, um, Lori's nightmare of the federal types of forms that end up having to be filed with certifications on how everything was spent.
Okay, so Wayne, this one might be for you. Is the pathway set up to disperse the funds through the Housing Trust?
I believe so. I don't know if Chaz is still on.
I am. Um, that, the, the agreements have been in place. Yes, the, the chair of the Affordable Trust has been working with CMHA, who is our, uh, management company that's doing that. I, I also wanna, wanna just throw in there, um, I wanna thank, um, you Veronica for the help for the flyers and stuff today. That was very helpful. Wayne, we did get it out to, um, TEO, which are going out in the, the boxes that we had asked for. We also have, um, 200 that are, that are, that we have some at Town Hall. Uh, we also have, Joe Schenk has got, uh, been, been sending that out. So the word definitely is out there. Um, we have been getting, uh, responses as far as, um, uh, who's been applying. So this is being, right now it's successful and I'm very happy.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
I, I wrote on the flyers that I, 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 I don't know if you've seen it, but I wrote the phone number for CMHA. And I also put, um, you know, for, for bet, for fund availability, best fund availability applied by December 31st. Because I didn't know how long the, you know, how long we'd have the money around. And if someone gets the flyer and says, oh, I'll do this after the holidays, they could be out of luck. So, um, it would be good to have that out there, okay?
Yeah, we wanna make sure that we get the fuel assistance in there too. We wanna make sure that all of it's together because people are really struggling right now. And both the Housing Authority and the Housing Trust want to make sure that we can do whatever we need to do to help it, keep them in their houses.
Okay, thank you, Chaz.
Yep.
Okay, so I have all things under this. Can I just say a few things? I, I've talked about MJTC. I wanna say that, um, Chaz is the representative for the Planning Board right now for Safe Routes to School. And I'm doing that as the MJTC rep for the Board of Selectmen. And Chaz and I did, um, speak with Rachel O'Donnell last week. And we're gonna meet again on January. We really need the schools on board though, and I know that they're really, really busy. So, um, so we're, we're working on that. So I wanted to say that. I wanted to remind everybody about the town vote on January 23rd. That if you're going to, uh, register to vote in that election, I think January 4th is the day for that. And, um, right now, there's no early voting. But I read in the budget stuff that that's part of the budget that's being looked at by the state. Is that correct, Jim? Payment for early vote, um, in the first six months of the year?
I don't know that.
Have you seen that?
I would defer to the clerk on that, I don't know.
Okay, so, but there is absentee ballot application. So if you're going to be voting absentee, uh, you need to take that into consideration. One other question, do we have to sign the ballot? When is it, um, permanent or real or whatever?
Um, that'd be, again, a function of the clerk. I can find out from her when she has that back from the printers and it gets up before you guys. It could be perhaps your next meeting, yeah.
Okay, all right. So, um, and my last thing is, uh, Talk of the Town is Thursday. That's my senior center thing and hasn't been canceled because virtual things are still on. So if people wanna join in on that, it's, uh, 10:30 on Thursday morning. So during the snowstorm, it could be fun listening. So, um, I'll, I'll, I believe the Planning Board has a hearing for the 55 and over next week. So things like that need to be announced. So anyway, the 55 and over bylaw.
All right, on the 5-4, review approved meeting minutes from November 2nd. Can I get a motion, please?
Um, I move that we approve the meeting minutes for November 2nd, uh, 2000?
2020. You said 2000. Yeah, you said 2000. You said 2, all I heard was 2000, that's 20.
Oh, okay.
For 2020, correct?
I might have frozen here.
Yeah, okay. I'll second the 2020 motion. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. 5-5, review and sign payroll bills, warrants, can I get a motion?
Am I frozen again? Can you hear me?
Uh, I can now.
Okay, I, I move, it, my internet connection is unstable. It keeps telling me that. All right, review and, um, I move that we review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Second, all those in favor?
Uh, Veronica Cal, yes.
And Wayne Miller, yes. So we have a couple of executive sessions.
Well, before that, Wayne, I wanted to talk about meetings in January, February. Um, and setting up a date for an evaluation.
Get the wrong calendar.
I, I'm just thinking with all the budgeting things going up on, are we gonna need to, um, meet more frequently?
Well, I, I think we'll meet more frequently with the finance, I have working sessions with the Finance Committee. That's what we've done in the past, so I, I would plan on doing that. I don't want, I, I don't wanna do them in this meeting just because of the length. It really needs a standalone work session. So we can discuss those. But as far as I see, January 5th and 19th would be our normal meeting days, which works out good because of the coins before the election, those are the two. And then by the, the third member of the board.
Okay, so I'm looking at this. So January 5th, so 1st and 3rd. And then February, okay, February is 2nd. All right, 1st and 3rd, uh, and then we need additional meetings because of budget policy since that we meet with the Finance Committee beginning in January, I think, so.
Yeah, I mean, a, after the 1st, that's when I, oh, the blanket's the fan.
Okay, plus work sessions with finance.
Yep, and, uh, so Jim, the thing for your evaluation and on your contract has to be done by the 31st. I think the last two, two years we've extended that.
You, you guys took a vote and I had agreed to move that out into March, just to try to coincide the election. So you have somebody getting elected in April, they have the full year on board, um, to do an evaluation. Whereas what we had been doing is people get on the end of April, so really May. And then there'd be an evaluation in December and they wouldn't have had the benefit of the full year. So that's why it was agreed to be pushed off to-
Okay, so we're still good with that?
The end of March. I'm, I'm okay either way, um, whatever your pleasure.
I, I guess my question is, are there goals? When I have ever evaluated somebody, I always have a goals and objectives document. And I have a, um, you know, uh, some sort of rubric. I, I, does that exist?
It does not. There is, um, there's a standard format that the board has used in the past for an evaluation tool that I don't think anyone has, has been in love with. I think there've been a number of discussions about changing it. It's never been changed. Uh, the way the, the contract between the parties reads is if there's gonna be an evaluation tool, it should be agreed by the parties. There have been a number of examples of, of other communities or private industry, um, evaluation tools that have been floated, but nothing ever rates of God. And either loving it or hating it. And if hating it, proposing something else, I'm, I'm game to find something that makes everybody happy. But in terms of goals, there was a discussion about goals and objectives most recently, would have been the October of 19 minutes that, um, you just got the audio just the other day on. And what you'll hear there, if you haven't, yeah, what you'll hear there if you haven't listened to it yet.
I haven't listened to it.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you the, the Cliff note. You're gonna hear that there were goals and objectives for 18, 19, and nothing set from that point forward. There's discussion about just general, um, ongoing operational things that are reflected in either job description or charter, but no specific, um, goals with underlying objectives, which had been done in prior years.
Okay, um, and the rubric, where do I find that or the evaluation tool?
I can email it to you. I'll, I'll pull up the, the most recent version of it and send it right off to you.
All right, that would be good, thank you. All right, so we are moving to March. Do we need some sort of agreement or something to do that? Or are we good with this?
We should commit it to writing, we never really have it in the minutes. But I mean, technically, if you look at the contract now, it says, you know, uh, December 31st. So just for, for clarity, we probably should, you know, make that, make that official, so.
If you wanna write something up, Wayne, and we could.
Yeah, I mean, we can discuss it quickly next week.
Just change the date within the existing language would all, all we would need to do, I think. So I can, I can get that for the next meeting.
Yeah, it'll be very quick, so I'm fine with that.
All right, thank you.
All right, on to executive sessions. Can I get a couple of motions, please?
Let me ask a question first. Are we returning to open session to adjourn or no?
To adjourn, yes. Otherwise, you'd be in executive session for the rest of your life. But to open session for the purpose of action, no. So you, you're gonna be in executive session back up just to close.
Um, I'm, can I do both motions at the same time?
Absolutely.
One and then the other?
Yep.
And just say returning to open session with the second one? Is that correct?
For the purpose of adjournment, yeah.
Um, I move that we enter executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares regarding the fire union, the police union, the supervisors' union, the clerical union, and the highway water union.
And I'll second that and I do declare. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes, and the second one.
Um, I move that we, um, enter an executive session following the first one, pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, uh, regarding Kelly Merrill versus Townsend.
I do declare and I do second.
And I have to say, and we will be returning to, um, open session for adjournment only.
Yes, I'll second the amended motion. All those in favor?
Veronica Cal, yes.
Wayne Miller, yes. So Hartley, if you wanna do your thing with, uh, stopping the recording and getting it off the TV and all that stuff, we'll convene in a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.